Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting. It is Monday, November 4th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
And the mayor will be absent this evening. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, thank you. In the mayor's absence, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Alderman Berry as temporary chairman tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, now if you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening. Is anyone here from the school board, District 200, if you would like to come up, please? This is School Board Members' Day, which will be November 15th, 2019. Whereas the school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas the school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put into their trust. And whereas the school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy, they are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours of public service and with no compensation. And whereas employers are supportive of their employees who serve as board members, generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and citizens they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas the decisions made by the school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them at the front line of American democracy. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim November 15th, 2019 as School Board Members' Day as a way to honor those citizens who devote so much of their time and energy for the education of our children. Thank you very much. Would you like to get up?
I'm Chris Crabtree, Vice President of the Board of Education. I'm here tonight with Susan Booton and Jenna Erickson, board members. Thank you to the Warrenville City Council. You guys are always so supportive of our efforts and work tirelessly also on behalf of kids in our district. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, before we get to citizens' comments, which is the next item on the agenda, we have a few guidelines for the citizens' comments. We have several people who have signed up to speak, which is great. The city council loves to have people get up and tell us what they think. So, to encourage compliance with the unofficial three-minute limit, in anticipation of a significant level of public comment on this subject, we desire to ensure all parties have an opportunity to comment in efficient manner. If you could stay within the three minutes, that would be great. It's not necessary, but it's just being kind to the other people who are here. Be concise. It's okay to indicate you agree with the comments of another person instead of repeating what they've already said. Be respectful. The audience is filled with your neighbors, some of whom might not agree with your perspective. So, please, no clapping or jeering or cheering. The city council does not typically respond to public questions during the meeting. If you would like a response, please include your question on the city comment sheet and someone from staff will follow up with you later. There are, if you have anything that you would like to hand out, I would like you to hand that to the city clerk first for distribution after the meeting. And if you have something also during regular city hours during the day, if you have something that you would like to bring in, if you would like to make a comment at the next meeting, whenever that is, just bring it in and we'll have it available to us ahead of time so we can always read it. Also, you can email those copies to the city, too. The core question is, what will the city do? But the state of Illinois has already decided that recreational cannabis will be legal across the state beginning January 1st, 2020. We're not here to decide what the state has already decided. They've decided it's legal. We're just trying to decide how are we going to handle it. The Plan Commission has made a recommendation to the council on the core question. The city council has committed to follow a process for public input and making a decision on the core question. Tonight, the city council is only considering the referral of the Plan Commission's recommendation, and that will go to the November 11th, 2019 Community Development Committee of the Whole Meeting for additional public input and council discussion. The decision that the city has to make must be made before the end of 2019. So, a decision is not being made tonight. It is still going up for discussion. Okay? And City Administrator Cokely.
Thank you. We're all playing some different roles tonight with the mayor being ill. The main guidelines you're referring to is generally for any citizen comments, but obviously specifically to the cannabis issue, which I think most of you probably are here for. One thing I would clarify is the core question for the city that the state, the only thing the state allows the city or county to make a decision on in Illinois is if they will allow any dispensaries or any marijuana processing type facilities, there's some other details in there, and if the city council does decide to allow it, to opt in, then they can do some restrictions about the time and location, so what conditions would be on such a use. So, you probably all have opinions, as we all do, about whether it should be allowed or shouldn't be allowed, or whether people should use marijuana or not, but the state has told us, here's what's going to happen, January 1st is legal. The city council has no authority to change that part of it. It's what, part of the core decision is just to clarify what the folks up here, elected people, can actually make a decision about. Certainly, citizen comments, if you have any other comments tonight, the council is always willing to listen to those, too. You may have other things that aren't about cannabis and you're always willing, or, I'm sorry, they're always willing to listen to your comments regardless of what they are, but we wanted to clarify what the council actually can and can't do. Thank you.
No, not till the announcements for the mayor. Okay. So, for citizens' comments, if you would please come to the podium and give us your name and address so everyone here can hear you and also people who are watching on Channel 10. Also, I'm going to read the names in advance, so there's quite a few people here. If you would kind of come up and maybe be prepared to come to the podium, it would save a little bit of time. So, if two or three people are waiting in line, that would be great. Vivian Lund, Bob Seibert, Sheila Wakely, Kate Bear, Mike Bear, and Jack Grodowski.
I didn't realize the issue was on the agenda tonight that you have. It's a difficult one for you to deal with, but I want to talk about is just to ask the city council to be aware that I've put a bug in the ear of the city administrator and Phil, that I'm requesting the city to re-landscape City Hall and the Veterans Memorial and the fountain in the Commons. And I would hope that you would include in the budget for this coming year a landscape architect that, who specializes in natives and perennial designs. I think with our new logo being Warrenville, City of Warrenville naturally, we need to get rid of these things that get clipped and no longer look natural. And many of them have died back and, you know, they're just 20 years old and they need to be replaced. And so, if that process could be started at least in the coming year and then perhaps accomplished later, if you could do it all next year, that'd be great. But there are new natives and, I mean, there are native plants, but they've been redone and perennials that are more disciplined than a lot of things people think of when you say you're going to have a natural garden and then they see a lot of things that they think are weeds. And that's not what I'm requesting. I'm requesting beautiful, disciplined natives and perennials.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court, I would second Vivian's notification there on the native We do a lot of those. The particular issue tonight, I believe that the proper, most important question has not been addressed by the staff, the city council, or the Plan Commission. I think this question is, what impact does recreational marijuana sales have on the citizens and the adjacent businesses? We would have to look at existing states like California, Colorado, to see these impacts. Long Beach has a marijuana sales building there. My brother, Dr. Seibert, lives in Long Beach, and when I talked to him, he stated that they have had shootings, robberies, fights, and long lines outside the sales store. Says the adjacent businesses have complained about the drop in customers due to the fear. Also, my brother-in-law runs a mechanical business in Littleton, Colorado. He stated that his business was doing very well, then next door, a marijuana grower and sales opened up. He said he has lost significant customers because of the fear of the customers with the marijuana sales. The automotive insurance has increased in California and Colorado. I talked to my brother, who is an attorney and for the state of California, and he suggests it's due to the added risk and liability that is occurring with these marijuana sales and then the individuals driving. Insurance companies have to recoup their expenses. There is a significant difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. So, I called my brother in Lake Forest, who is a medical doctor. He suggested that in medical marijuana, they monitor the organs to determine if there's any significant deterioration due to the consumption of marijuana. He stated that in recreational, there is no requirement to actually measure impact. He states, "In today's medical research, there is no complete understanding of what occurs with long-term marijuana use." So, I think that it is important not to identify where to put buildings, not to identify how close they are to religious schools, parks, but to identify how it impacts the citizens and how it impacts businesses that are in the community. I send 11 trucks out every day. My roads out will be in areas that could be marijuana distributors. I would be very unhappy if one of these individuals ran into one of my trucks. I think this should be looked at, and I think there is the best solution to let some other community sell the marijuana.
Thank you.
Evening. I'm Jack Grodowski, Glen Drive South. I'm not here to argue about the pro or cons about marijuana. I mean, everyone's entitled to their own opinion. My own, I have a larger concern here, though. The larger concern is what kind of image does this present to the world or to the neighboring communities if Warrenville's the only town that approves the sale or distribution of legalized recreational marijuana? Surrounding towns have turned it down, the unincorporated DuPage County has turned it down, and I'm hoping, you know, that this council will also reject the Planning Commission's recommendations and agree that Warrenville doesn't need to become the place where people come to get high. I mean, we've got enough tattoo places, we've got enough bars, and we've got a pawn shop. I don't think we need a recreational marijuana shop, so, and that's all I've got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'm 11 years old and I live at 29W 420 Townline Road. My mom and dad have always taught me not to do drugs, and that marijuana is something I should stay away from. I know that it isn't good for me. I think most of the kids in our town know that. We have been taught in school, we have been taught, we have been taught by our families. But now I hear that our town is thinking of letting people sell and buy it, and I can't figure out why. Why would you tell us that it isn't good and then let it into our town? When you let it into our town, it makes it easier to get and shows us that, and it shows us that you don't think it's so bad. It makes us think that maybe that you were telling us, maybe what you were telling us wasn't the truth. I don't think you should, I don't think you should let it into your town, into our town just to make money. The kids in our town are worth more than you can make selling it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Bear, 29 West 420 Townline Road. I agree with what Bob and previous, Caitlin and the previous guy mentioned. I may address the concern for safety. Safety for my kids and me. I've got two teen drivers in my family, soon to be a third teen driver, and I know teens have to deal a lot with things today with cell phones and GPS and navigation and all that. That's way more technology we have in cars today than I ever had in our whole house growing up. So, I think with all the accidents that teens have, it would be risky to have more people on the roads either high on marijuana, using marijuana locally. So, I don't think that any tax revenue, regardless of how much it is, if it's $100,000 or $500,000, that tax revenue is not worth anybody's life. I mean, I'm sure every one of you have grandkids or kids or family members that live in town. I think it would be wise to keep the town and roads as safe as we can for all of our sakes. And then, wanted to read a study from Science Daily. It's from Ohio State University from 2017. The lady who wrote it is a professor there, Bridget Fressler. She said, "Research found that crime isn't higher in the area immediately surrounding marijuana outlets, but adjacent areas saw about 84 more property crimes per year than neighborhoods without a nearby marijuana store. The results show that legal marijuana sales come with a cost," she said, lead author and study of professors of social work at the Ohio State University. "If you're looking strictly from a public health standpoint, there is reason to be concerned about having a marijuana outlet near your home," she said. "They examined three types of crime based on the data from Denver Police Department: violent crime, property crime, and marijuana outlet-specific crime. This study did find, not surprisingly, that legal sales were linked to an increase in burglaries and other crimes at marijuana outlets themselves." She said that the findings of this, as well as her previous studies, suggest that there are reasons for citizens to be cautious about legal marijuana sales. So, this is someone away from here, has nothing to do with Warrenville, but they're warning us of things that could happen if we approve this. She continues, "There are definitely negative public health consequences, including increased crime," she said. "There may be economic benefits in terms of more tax revenue, money spent in neighborhoods, and citizens, us and you, have to decide how they want to measure those, the benefits versus the cost." So, anyways, I'd just like to finish with saying that I hope you guys can see our concern here and that you would consider to not allow it in Warrenville and keep Warrenville safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila? Sheila Wakely? I know you filled out a form. Are you? Okay, I guess Sheila's not here. Is there anyone else who'd like to get up and make a comment? You're more than welcome to, even if you haven't filled out a form. You can always fill one out after the fact. Just make sure that you give us your name and address, please.
Hello, thank you for hearing me. I'm Annette Voss. I'm at 30W 154 Maplewood Court in Warrenville. I've been a homeowner here for 21 years, and what drew me to Warrenville was the family nature of this community. I've raised two kids here and have gone through the perilous teen years with those two kids, and I was so thankful when they came out unscathed. There's a lot of pitfalls, of course, for our young people, and one concern I've had throughout this whole process is some of the studies that show that in areas where marijuana is legalized, there is a greater use by children who are in middle school, for example, underage use, and certainly the availability of dispensary marijuana will not overcome the need for black market marijuana. We're not going to be ensuring that everybody's going to get good quality marijuana by having this dispensary here. There'll still be a great need for, maybe even a stronger need for black market marijuana because people may not be able to pay a 40% tax on dispensary marijuana, and yet they may be drawn to the dispensary product initially, but after they find that they really need it to cope through some stressors or through some depression or anxiety that they may be dealing with, they may say to themselves, "Well, I can't afford that anymore, but I've still got to have it for this issue that I'm handling." And they're going to be turning to black market availability to try to overcome the high cost of a dispensary product. So, I don't think that we should delude ourselves into thinking that this would solve our problem with illegal drugs on our streets. There still will be illegal drugs, and the availability of the more pure substance will be something that will fuel interest on the part of our young people. And this courageous young girl who spoke today really demonstrates for us all how it sends a mixed message to our young people, who we've been trying to steer away from drugs and steer towards positive coping skills and methods to try to deal with their problems in life. And we're, if we were to allow a dispensary here, we would certainly be counteracting that message that we've been attempting to give our children. And if it's, and we know, I know that it will be accessible within our state, even if it's not here, and so you'd wonder, "Well, why not have it here?" And we'd get our tax revenue. But we all know how visibility sells products. Visibility is why people pay trillions of dollars to be on an ad for the Super Bowl, for example, because to get their product seen, to be seen by the public, is of huge value to someone trying to sell a product. And so, having that here within a community in which we have vulnerable people, as in every community, we have young people, we have disabled people here, we have people who can't drive elsewhere, who are coping with major issues in their lives, and they may turn to this very visible, very available resource as a way of may turn to this very visible, very available resource as a way of coping, and then be unable to use their discretionary funds for things that they really need, like housing or food. I unfortunately know a young man who I've known all of his life, one of my son's friends, who is so seriously addicted to marijuana, he can't do anything else. He can't really advance in his life because every bit of money he makes goes to that habit and to the alcohol habit that's coupled with it. And so having seen him go through this in his life, I realized that it's our duty to speak up for people who are vulnerable, who may have vulnerability, and who may be put at risk by having something so close that they don't need a car, they don't need to be able to drive somewhere to obtain, they can simply walk down the street. I do think, too, that we also delude ourselves if we think that just having this legal availability for marijuana is going to keep down a problem where our minors are getting it. As I said, there have been studies that show that legalized marijuana can and does increase use by middle-school-aged children. And I'm concerned that anybody has heard and knows that children get alcohol all the time and get illegal drugs all the time, and if it's available within our community, I think it's even more likely that they will receive that through the hands of a sibling or even a parent. And when you're talking about edibles that might be very attractive, like candy or brownies or what have you, it seems so innocuous. And again, I think I echo what our young speaker said today, that that sends a serious mixed message. And we have been a prudent town for many years, and we've done so to be concerned about history, about who comes after us, what kind of neighborhood we form for the people who are leaving this legacy to. And I would just ask you to keep doing that and to realize, we don't need this revenue. We have the option of getting this revenue. But as our police chief spoke at the first zoning meeting, much of our revenue or a lot of it would be add up in additional costs for policing and social services. And so I would ask you to please realize that the value of that money is very minimal. If it's one life we were able to save by not having it here, I think that's worthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Bear, 29 West 420 Townline Road. You know, I know that Illinois has already, you know, decided on this, so that's not something that we can control, obviously. But we can control what comes into our city, and we can control what message we're sending to other people because regardless of what income or revenue we think is going to come from this, it's going to end up portraying an image to the surrounding communities and to the people around us. And I, for one, don't want to be known as the place where you go to get pot. I don't want my kids to know that about our town. I want them to feel good about where they live. I want them to feel like it's a wholesome family town. And I want people to come here because they love Warrenville, not because they want to get high. I want people to come to Warrenville because they love the atmosphere and just the wholesomeness of it, and I feel like that would take away from that. And I just hope that you consider the image that it's portraying to others, as well as all the other concerns that were listed. But yeah, that's my main concern, is why are people coming to Warrenville? And I don't want that to be the reason why.
Thank you. So, do you want else? Okay, thank you all for your comments. Next, we go to official and staff comments. We do have a volunteer opportunity. The Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals is looking for someone to sit for Ward Three. They meet on Thursday evenings, the second and fourth, no, the first and the third?
No, the third.
After, okay. So it would be the first and the third?
It's the Thursday following the council meeting.
The Thursday following the council meeting. Got it. Sometimes it doesn't always work, the first and the third. But it is the same week as the city council meeting, and it is on Thursday evening at 7:00 o'clock right here. So if you have any questions, if anyone is here this evening and are interested in that, Tim Cosgrove is here. Raise your hand, Tim. He will be happy to answer your questions, okay? Also, former longtime city streets superintendent, Tom Fox, passed away this last week, and the city administrator will read some info in the mayor's absence.
Thank you. Mayor Bremel had intended to read this information from Tom's obituary tonight in honor of all the service he had. I will not do as eloquent a job as Mayor Bremel would have done, I'm sorry, but please bear with me. Many of you may know, Tom Fox was a longtime employee of the city. He was our street superintendent up till 1996. He served in the city for more than 20 years. I'll get to that in a minute, too. He was one of our first volunteer part-time police officers, right after we incorporated, before we even... I'll speak for the people that have told me this, really knew how to run a city. So he was a longtime volunteer, not just officially for the city and an employee, but also in the community. Thomas F. Fox passed away at home in the early morning hours of Monday, October 28th, just a week ago, surrounded by his family, including his wife and his sons. Tom was born in Oak Park in 1934 and grew up there. As a young man, he attended Washburn Trade School and became a journeyman plumber in the local labor union. Later, he and his brother Richard operated Fox Brothers Piping Contractor for 10 years. Then Tom and Marilyn, his wife, built their first home in Warrenville in 1956, before we even incorporated, and started their family there. Later, in 1967, they built a larger home on Oak Lane to accommodate the growing family. Tom was one of the first 10 early volunteer policemen for the city of Warrenville, following incorporation of the community in 1967. He then served as one of the earliest employees in the fledgling Public Works Department. There, he brought a lifetime of professional skills and innovative spirit to serve the public with the needs, public needs within the street department and the sewer and water department. At the time, when the new municipal government lacked financial resources and its employees struggled to make ends meet, he would fix water main breaks, getting the snow plowed, patching the potholes in the streets. Back then, they did everything just because they had to and they knew how. And he was one of those people. They made do with hand-me-down equipment and trucks patched together for their continued service. Eventually, Tom took on building inspection responsibilities and was named Public Works Director. Except for a two-year period when he left the city for a time to build some fine homes in Bloomington, Tom remained a highly valued employee until his retirement in 1996, almost 30 years of service to the community. In addition to those paid positions that he had with the city, he also served as the director or the coordinator of Emergency Services Disaster Agency for many years, and he remained an active volunteer even when he stepped down from that role. He was a dedicated member of the Warrenville Bible Chapel for many years and also served on the board of the Warren Tavern Preservationists over on Second Street. So Tom will be greatly missed by the community. He continued to do many things right up until the time when he passed away last week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Clerk?
Thank you, Chairman. I have three things tonight. Kind of a late notice, but I found out the other day that District 200 has a food pantry truck that goes around District 200 territory. And the last one will be November the 23rd, and it'd be at the Compass Church on 520 East Roosevelt Road in Wheaton from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So I thought this is a good service that they're doing to the community if you know a neighbor or anyone who needs some extra help with food. This is an opportunity for them to do that with no questions asked. And then they will start this up again in June, so they don't do it in the bad weather, obviously. The second thing is, the Bauer students have this Rocktober Fest, and they pick up good-sized rocks and they paint them with smiley faces and butterflies and birds and sayings on them, and then they're scattered around town. So when you're going around town, I found one right outside of City Hall the other day, had a smiley face on it, it's on my desk in the office. And if their penmanship is good, they might even get a message on a good-sized rock. So look for those around town. And then finally, the storm damage from Thursday's wonderful snowstorm. When I've been driving around town, I've noticed some piles of trees, branches, things that came down. So it won't be a regular drive-around-town pickup, but if you call City Hall and give them your name and address, then Public Works will come around and pick them up, so they don't have to sit there all winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Yeah, I just want to make a note on the marijuana issues, that it's still illegal in the federal law, so regardless of what Illinois has said, it's still an illegal substance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to announce, since this is happening before our next city council meeting, that a week from today, Monday, the 11th, is Veterans Day. There's going to be a Veterans Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial just outside this building. It's always at 11:00 on 11/11 every year. So if you're available that morning, please come out and join us for the memorial ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bevire?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for Tom Fox, all the things he did for this city. I worked part-time with him when I was real young, and then I ended up coming back and replacing his position for street superintendent, and he really did a lot of stuff for this town, and I just want to thank, you know, prayers are with the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Administrator?
Thank you. I'm going to jump ahead a couple of weeks from something we're going to be posting soon, since we have a whole crowd here. My staff's going to yell at me, but we have been posting for a mechanic technician for our Public Works Department. Our longtime mechanic supervisor, Vern Raderbacher, retired last June. We have been unsuccessful in filling that job, so you'll see a new posting soon, but if anyone here or you know of anyone who is a qualified mechanic that also has some fleet management skills, please send your application in. We welcome anybody, and even if it's not you, and you know somebody that has those skills, please let them know. We're probably looking for somebody that doesn't know they're looking for a job yet that really would love to come work here, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Attorney?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Now on to the approval of the agenda. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the November 4th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I would like to...
I would like to remove C from that agenda, but I probably need somebody else to actually read it when the time comes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motioner agrees.
Alderman Ashauer?
Agreed.
Okay, okay. All right, we have an agreement for the removal of C, okay? Now, we just need a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now on to the approval of the minutes. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2019 City Council Closed Session Meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. And now on to the consent agenda. Accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass Resolution R. 2019-48 approving the reduction of the public improvements' security cash bond for the Warrenville Grove Animal Hospital project and placing the project into a two-year maintenance period. B, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass Resolution R. 2019-49 accepting the public improvements associated with the Chooey's project, releasing the security cash bond and waiving the project's two-year maintenance period requirement. D, accept staff recommendation and approve the retirement agreement between the city of Warrenville and Mark Leonard. E, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission regarding meetings held on September 25th, 2019. F, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board Regular Meeting held on July 23rd, 2019, and Special Meeting held on September 10th, 2019. G, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting held on August 27th, 2019. H, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on October 24th, 2019. I, receive and file report of invoices paid up to October 23rd, 2019, in the amount of J, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before November 18th, 2019, in the amount
Move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Pro-Tom Claire Barry.
Second.
Okay, now we need a roll call, please.
Alderman Barry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Bevire?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda is approved.
Yes.
Yes, that's it. Okay, good. Okay, now on to item number, item C. Would suddenly like to bring that forward. Alderman Kreschel?
I would like to make a motion to accept the Plan Commission recommendation and direct the Community Development Committee to consider zoning ordinance text amendments that would permit and regulate certain recreational cannabis businesses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Yeah, I have some clarifying questions. I don't know if they go to the Community Development Director or... Because I can start there. I guess I'm going to ask exactly what we're passing tonight. I mean, I've obviously read the agenda item, but when I was at Plan Commission meetings in the public hearing, I heard Plan Commissioners discuss that if it came to city council, they needed to be able to make a choice, not just yes and no, but if it's yes, what exactly are we voting on? How have we looked at the ordinance? How have we made amendments? How have we chosen how we want it to look? And I'm wondering if that's what's happening here, that you're just expanding on a yes to give us later, we talked about early December, voting on if this is something that we want? How are you viewing it?
Okay, so the motion that's on the city council agenda is just simply accepting the Plan Commission's recommendation, not approving the Plan Commission's recommendation, but accepting it, and then deferring additional public comment and discussion by the city council on the subject to the Community Development Committee meeting, which is next Monday. The Plan Commission actually made two recommendations, both by a seven-to-one vote. The first was, from the Plan Commission members' perspective, they voted seven-to-one that it would be appropriate, in their mind, for the city to allow recreation cannabis-related businesses in the city of Warrenville. They then made a second motion that was specific, if they are ultimately allowed in the city of Warrenville by the city council. There's a very detailed framework of regulations that they would... There's a very detailed framework of regulations that they would be allowed under. Pretty narrowly focused, fairly restrictive. It would entail that any dispensary would have to have a limit on, or there would be specific limitations on where they could locate. They would require a public hearing and approval of a special use for a specific location. And there would only be one allowed in the community. So they forwarded two different recommendations for council consideration.
Okay, so we're not actually voting on implementation or not, correct?
Not tonight, no.
Right. As a follow-up to that, I've sat here long enough to know that staff has often said, especially during, when we had the developments going on around the city, if you intend in the end not to pass this, it can be a lot of work for staff to work something up only to, and not that you can ever predict this, because everybody changes and you can never promise how a vote will go. But that's what's going through my mind now, is I don't actually know if this is going to pass or not. And I have really talked to very few people. But I am sensitive to the time staff has. And so do you have thoughts on that? I mean, is that not an issue in this case?
Well, I think the bulk of, I mean, there's going to, the city is going to have to continue to invest additional time, energy, and effort into dealing with this issue. Now, we have a variety of regulations that are incorporated into the city code that have nothing to do with whether or not a dispensary is going to be allowed in the community. But it's, the regulations are in place because cannabis use has, from a recreation standpoint, has been prohibited, was illegal in the state of Illinois forever, essentially. And our regulations reflect that. So now that it's going to be legal, we're going to have to make a number of adjustments beyond the land use question of a dispensary or any other type of businesses. And those will be brought forward for the city council consideration as we move towards the end of the year. So hopefully, we can get our city code in order and consistent with what the law now says. As it relates specifically to the work that staff or the city has to do in order to deal with the question of whether or not a recreation cannabis-type business would be allowed in the city, a lot of that work has already been done as part of the Plan Commission process. We developed a framework of proposed zoning regulations. Yes, if it is something that the city council ultimately decides is appropriate and is going to be allowed in the community. I mean, there is an ordinance that has to be adopted, but the framework of regulations is going to be incorporated into that ordinance. So in my opinion, the majority of the work to establish that, what that framework might look like, has already been done. Now, of course, as the city council moves through these final phases of the process here, the city council may want additional information, investigation, additional modifications to the information and regulatory framework that's been presented to you by the Plan Commission. And that would require some additional work. But I think the bulk of the work has already been completed as part of the three-public hearing process at the Plan Commission level.
And that's what's been in our packet, is I'm assuming, I mean, that's what I gathered, that all the information, which was wonderful, actually, in the packet tonight, is the bulk of that information work.
Yeah, the staff report that was in the Plan Commission, or in the city council agenda packet, is the most recent version of the staff report. And it doesn't include all the additional information that was copied and included in the two prior versions of the staff report. So it's not a comprehensive collection of all the materials that were shared with the Plan Commission. But in the staff report, there's a reference to where those additional materials can be accessed on the city's website. And of course, if the city council members, or for that matter, anybody in the public is interested in having, obtaining copies or reviewing any of the other information that was distributed to the Plan Commission that's not included in the agenda packet, we'd be more than happy to provide that information to you again.
Okay, so it's probably not this meeting that we talk a lot about how we feel about this, because we're only asking for the ordinance. I guess my struggle, you can tell I'm struggling. My struggle, and even as I listen to the community speak, and I've been to the public hearings, and I have stacks of articles from the newspapers and everywhere else in my own experience of working in research on this compound back in the '60s, all kinds of stuff. I have to separate all of our, and my feelings perhaps, but people out there that have written to the council and have expressed their opinions on if marijuana is a good or bad, or positive or negative drug to be using, and all that kind of stuff, that the state has already made that decision. There are certain, wherever we pass here, there's no, there will always be access to cannabis for anybody in this community, even if we don't pass it. So the idea that if we don't pass it, it's not going to be in the community, is not true. And so as I look at what my role is here, and I've chatted to some of the staff about some of this, it's what is the effect on Warrenville? As an Alderman, thinking about that, what is that effect on our police and our emergency services and different things like that? And so that's where a lot of my time has been spent drilling that down. We just got, you know, we always get one of the top safest cities in Illinois, and I just read, read somewhere that we got number one safest city in one either poll or something. And so it's kind of like we always end up at the top. And so a great deal of that, not all of it, but a great deal of that is the police force and how they operate and what they do and how they do it. And so those of you that have been listening to meetings know that I very, I'm very proud of that police force, and I want to support that police force. So I listen to those comments. So anyway, so that's all the stuff I've been thinking about, and that's probably a lot how a vote, but it still is different what we're voting on tonight than saying yes to this proposal. So I guess you've cleared it up. I just felt I had to, I had to share that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Ashauer?
Well, the, actually reading the recommendation, "Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Direct Community Development Committee to Consider Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments That Would Permit and Regulate Certain Recreational Cannabis Businesses", would indicate that if you support this motion, that you would be opting in. The, I mean, it clearly states would permit and regulate certain recreational cannabis businesses. And if I'm misunderstanding that, somebody please tell me where I'm wrong.
Attorney?
I think I can clarify just procedurally what's happening. You're correct that that was the recommendation from the Plan Commission. But tonight, what you would be voting on is just to refer the recommendation to the Committee of the, the CDC Committee of the Whole Meeting for further discussion. So the voting yes tonight would just be yes on the referral for further discussion. It's not voting on approving the recommendation. It's just accepting it more physically, like you've received it, and now you're sending it to the committee for discussion. That's all that's happening with the motion is for tonight. Then the committee would then consider it and discuss it, and then theoretically refer a recommendation to the council for further vote. So.
Thank you.
Because also, the, on November 11th, which will be next Monday evening, the city council accepts additional public testimony and input on the issue. City staff presents any additional information that has been collected on the issue. And the CDC recommends the city council approval of specific zoning ordinances and city code amendments on the issue. So all of those items will be discussed next Monday evening. We're just going to say this evening that, yes, we want to discuss this. We want to have a major discussion. We want more information. We know that the Plan Commission has debated this issue, and they've listened to everyone. And not all, Alderman, got to go to all those committee meetings. We would like to hear also from you as the citizens. I know you caught up here this evening. But if you have more issues that you would like to talk about, we're going to discuss them next week also. So tonight is just that time to say yes. We're sitting here with an open mind right now. We haven't made any decisions. And we just want to discuss it a little bit more. Okay, any other questions here or comments? Alderman Bevier?
Yeah, just wanted to say I wish this would come to discussion before it came on the consent agenda. People are, you know, I'm getting a lot of people with emails, and most of them are against it. Not very many for it. But then I look at, we looked at video gambling. We had a track record on video gambling, what was going to happen in other towns, and was it creating a commotion? And everybody decided that it wasn't good for the city, just the image. I mean, I voted yes for the video gambling, but it didn't go through. But I just can't vote on this tonight on the consent agenda without us fully discussing this and getting to the details. And then I can make my vote. So I'm going to be voting no tonight.
And just to, just to clarify again, a vote to approve the motion that's being made tonight is not a vote to allow recreational marijuana businesses in Warrenville. It's simply a vote to allow further comment on the consideration by the council at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, any other? Alderman Wilson?
Yeah, I'm looking at what we have tonight. And there were quite a few discussions about setbacks from the different locations, from the schools and churches and things. And in our packet tonight, they came up with seven different proposals and exhibits for us to look at to decide how they have decided on the setback locations for each one of them. There was discussion as whether it should be 1,000 feet, or 500 feet, or 250, depending upon the circumstances. Well, they have recommended, through their own discussion, the Planning Commission. So tonight, we're looking at that, and I see where their recommendation is. Gives me an opportunity to look at all seven of those possibilities for setbacks. And that's what I'm looking for now. So I have this now that I didn't have last week, until the Plan Commission gave it. I didn't happen, I was out of town, I didn't go. But that's not beside the point. But the point is, and here, they've given us now finer, more detailed information about the locations of these. Also, the fact that there's only going to be one of them, there's not going to be two. But it also raises the questions in about in the business area where this could be. Technically, it could be any business area that's in the city of Warrenville. And they provided us with individual maps. Was showing us where the locations are, that this could be approved by the Plan Commission, would be approved, or at least has a possibility. And it gives us further information, particularly me. I don't know, maybe no, everybody else knew this. But looking at these maps and where these things could possibly go, that's important for me personally to make a decision. I don't want this in places that I don't want it, if I did want it to begin with. I may or may not, my decision hasn't really been made yet. But this information that they have given us is backed up with their studies and their recommendations that it took them time to make, the Plan Commission. They didn't come up with all of these things at the very first time. They had to look at it and discuss it. So what we're having now is the opportunity to review in more detail what the Plan Commission has recommended for us to consider. So tonight, I'd like to approve this, I'm voting yes, to go ahead. Let us give our expressions back to the Plan Commission. Let us review the information they gave us. We are not voting yes or no on whether this will even take place in Warrenville. That will come later. Next Monday night on the 11th, we will have another discussion for the Plan Commission. When it, not in the Plan Commission, the Community Development. At that time, we'll have an opportunity to discuss the pros and cons of recommendations by the Plan Commission. So this is informational for us, so that we can form, as individuals on the council, more detailed and get us information that we didn't have up to this point. But I just want to know that, I think that our attorney is pointing, this is not a vote, yes or no, on whether or not we will have it in the city. That will come later. Thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
I think Alderman Wilson raises a great point about the maps, which makes me think of a question I wanted to ask staff before next week's meeting. A way that this was phrased several times was that these maps had to do with all the commercial properties in town. And since Cantera is not anywhere on these maps, because it isn't zoned B2 or M1 and so on. But yet, when most people think about the commercial properties in town, they certainly would think we're talking about Cantera. And yet, that is not on these maps anywhere. My question for staff is just what consideration involving Cantera went into these maps?
The Cantera development is zoned SD, Special Development District, which is a unique zoning category, to say the least. Within the SD zoning district, any development that occurs has to be performed as a planned unit development. So when Cantera was originally envisioned, there was a planned unit development approval that the city originally granted for that project. And as part of a planned unit development approval in an SD district, one of the first things that has to be created and enacted is a comprehensive set of development control regulations, which is essentially, it's a zoning subdivision landscape and sign ordinance that applies specifically to that project. And it, in many cases, supersedes the city's normal zoning subdivision landscaping and signage regulations that was put in place for Cantera. In order, and within that Special Development Control Regulation framework for Cantera, it identifies the type of development and land uses that can happen in the different areas within Cantera, and then establishes the specific types of businesses that are permitted or permitted with special approval within Cantera. The fact of the matter is, is that if the city wants to allow, is interested in allowing some type of recreation cannabis businesses anywhere in Cantera, the original PUD approvals for the Cantera project would need to be modified. That would entail a pretty hefty public hearing process. Every property owner within the Cantera boundary, and every property owner within 250 feet of the perimeter of Cantera would need to receive a public notice. And they would all have an opportunity to participate, you might say, in that process to amend the Cantera regulations to allow for recreation cannabis businesses. So it's a pretty aggressive, time-consuming process. It certainly is something that can be done by the city. It's certainly not something that would need to be done by the city before the end of this calendar year. We need to get our normal zoning ordinance straightened out and either be clear that cannabis businesses are allowed with certain restrictions and conditions, or cannabis-related business, recreation cannabis businesses are prohibited in the city of Warrenville. But that doesn't, you know, if we prohibit, or if we allow them in the, you know, somewhere in the city outside of Cantera, we could always come back and then adjust the Cantera regulations. But from the staff perspective, we didn't feel it would be appropriate to go through the whole public hearing process to amend the Cantera regulations before we knew where the city council was going to kind of play out where these types of businesses in the rest of the community.
That's very interesting. I hadn't seen any discussion of that in any of the Plan Commission meetings or any of the previous public hearings. So I'm glad to have that feedback as to why it was done in this specific way. It only affects certain parts of town and not others, which I hope is now clear to anybody who's considering these maps and looking at which specific areas are, I suppose, under consideration and which ones aren't. Thank you.
Alderman Kreschel?
Thanks. Just one quick question. Does the zoning that includes the maps and things we have here in our packet, would that piggyback the medical cannabis distribution that is allowed in town? If we had a, someone who wanted to open up a store, would they follow the same zoning and regulations, or would they be too separate?
The city already has regulations that are part of the zoning ordinance that control what can happen. control what can happen with a medical dispensary facility, or a medical production facility. When the state of Illinois passed the law that made medical marijuana legal with a card, and you had, you know, there's a whole process that you have to, to work through with the state to make that happen, they told all communities in the state that you have to allow a medical dispensary and a medical production facility in some form or another. So the city was, it was basically dictated, dictated to us by the state that we had to accommodate it, and we did, and that's already in our ordinances.
Okay, so there would be no plans to allow that in the same type of ordinance, as far as restrictions and buffer zones and things like that? That would be a separate, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Widener?
Just as a follow-up, Director Mansour, I understood that a medical distributor could operate under the same roof as a recreational. In that case, if the city attracted both, would zone, separate, different zoning requirements need to be enacted, or would the existing ones that we decide on be the ones that would direct?
The, the recreation cannabis framework that was recommended by the Plan Commission from a regulatory standpoint is more stringent and includes additional requirements that don't apply to the medical cannabis distribut, dispensaries, in the city, that is, anyway. So what would happen ultimately if somebody wanted to locate a dispensary that would serve both medical customers and recreation customers in the City of Warrenville and the council? Let's just assume that the council approved and enacted what the Plan Commission has recommended. Those, you know, they would by default need to comply with those, because it applies to the, the recreation cannabis component of their business plan, and it wouldn't conflict with anything that's in the ordinance already for the medical facilities. So because the recreation would be more restrictive, it doesn't conflict with, so we wouldn't be creating an issue, they don't, the regulations don't conflict.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh, no, we have to have a voice vote, excuse me. A roll call, please.
Okay. Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Barry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. We have nothing on the regular agenda, we have nothing under unfinished business or new business. We need a motion for closed session. Alderman Kreschel?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of five ILCS 120/2, print C, print five, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry? Oh, roll call, sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to go into closed session, we will not return. We will not return.
We won't be doing any other business tonight.
And there will be no other business tonight, so we, we're done. Is that what we do? I can't remember.
Just to clarify, you're free to stay, but the council won't be doing anything after closed session, so, functionally.
Thank you, thank you for listening and watching.